Good evening, everyone. I'll call this regular council meeting to order. If you would all rise for the invocation that will be given by Father Dave Newhart from St. Elizabeth Episcopal Church and remain standing for the pledge, which tonight will be led by Councilmember McPartlin.
Thank you, and it is an honor to be here on this 9/11 day in which we remember those who lost their lives. Twenty-nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven lost their lives. The total count was twenty-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six, which included the terrorists. But we remember the twenty-nine-seventy-seven. They gave their lives. We remember the first responders who gave their lives helping others. And we need to remember that today and how it changed our world and how it changed the way that we look at things today. So let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of comfort which you provide for us. We thank you that we can come to you in our time of need, in our time of courage, and in our time of anything that happens in our lives. Most of all, Lord, we thank you for the direction that you give us. I thank you for our city council members who direct this city, who look after it, who care for it, just as you care for us. So Father, tonight I ask that you would continue to bless this city, bless our citizens, bless our council member and those who are in government, and let us always remember our first responders who are out there protecting us. So we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Iavino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, I have a couple of proclamations to give, and I'll be right back. Did I pronounce that last name correct?
Yes.
Oh, look at that. I nailed it. Thank you. Hi, how are you? Very nice to have you up here today. How you doing today? Good to have you guys. Want to turn around?
Thanks.
All right. This is a proclamation declaring September as Hunger Action Month in September -- oh, I'm sorry, in Sebastian, Florida. Whereas hunger and poverty remain issues of grave concern in the United States and the state of Florida, the Treasure Coast and the city of Sebastian, with 24,616 children and adults in Indian River County now categorized as food insecure. And whereas the city of Sebastian is committed to working with the Treasure Coast Food Bank in mobilizing people about the role and importance of food banks and other hunger relief organizations by bringing attention to the need to devote more resources to hunger issues. And whereas food banks and hunger relief organizations across the country, including the Treasure Coast Food Bank, coordinated Hunger Action Day on September 12, 2019, and will continue to host numerous events throughout September to shed light on this important issue and encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in our local community. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Sebastian, Florida, do hereby proclaim September as Hunger Action Month in Sebastian and call this observance to the attention of our citizens.
Yep. Hi, I'm Sheri Siegfried. I'm Director of Client Services for the Treasure Coast Food Bank, and I have with me tonight my assistant Tristan. And I'd like to thank you guys so much on behalf of our CEO staff, Board of Directors, for declaring this Hunger Action Month here in September. The Treasure Coast Food Bank is the largest hunger relief organization on the Treasure Coast and only food bank providing food and other essentials to those in need. We are currently serving approximately 100,000 individuals who are finding themselves fighting hunger on a weekly basis. We cannot do this without your continued support and the support of our over 300 partner agencies. In the past year, we have provided over 40 million meals to those in need in our area. Please go to our website, StopHunger.org, to learn what you can do this Hunger Action Month. We have a calendar that celebrates different activities throughout the month. And once again, that's StopHunger.org.
Thank you very much.
And as you can see, the council, all council members, Vice Mayor, myself, all support this organization and believe very strongly in it by wearing our ties in support. So it's a wonderful organization. Thank you, guys. Dr. Christina Jacobs. How are you?
Thank you.
Hi, welcome. This is a proclamation designating the month of September 2019 as Attendance Awareness Month. Whereas chronic absences, missing 10% or more of school, or just two or three days a month for any reason, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. And whereas chronic absences weakens our communities and local economy, and whereas schools and community partners can reach out more frequently to absent students to determine why they are missing school and what would help them attend more regularly. Whereas chronic absences can be significantly reduced when schools, parents, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from going to school. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Sebastian, Florida, do hereby proclaim that our city will stand with the nation in recognizing September as Attendance Awareness Month and commit to reducing absenteeism to give all children and an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive.
I'm Christina Jacobs, the Coordinator of Student Services for the School District of Indian River County. On behalf of the Department of Student Services with the school district, I want to thank the city council and the larger community for the opportunity to raise awareness of the importance of attendance in student achievement. And what I can tell you is that within the school district, we have been engaging actively in identifying ways to improve attendance for our students. We know it's the first step in engaging students in the educational process, and we will continue to work to identify what barriers students are encountering in attending school and supporting them in getting back into school. So we thank you very much for the support in this regard.
Thank you very much.
We have one brief announcement tonight. Sebastian Inlet Centennial Celebration is this Saturday, September 14, from 10:00 to 4:00, at Sebastian Inlet State Park, 9700 South Highway A1A in Melbourne Beach. One hundred years they've been around.
That's going to be a fun event. I hear they're going to -- they have the safety stickers that they put on boats, and if you have your boat out in the water on Saturday, I believe you can go to the south side of the Sebastian inlet there where the ramp is, and they'll do the inspection for free and give you the stickers. So if you're out on the water on Saturday, swing by there. It'd be a good idea. Thank you for that, Madam Vice Mayor. I'll leave this to item seven, the consent agenda. Council, what's your pleasure?
I move approval of item A and B.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Iavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight, committee reports and appointments. We have an appointment to make this evening. The Citizens Advisory Committee, the NPO Citizens Advisory Committee, we have an appointment to make. I believe we had one person that has responded to the advertisement.
Correct.
And that is Amber Serta.
Mm-hmm.
Council, I would recommend that we appoint Ms. Serta to fill the unexpired term.
I have no objection. I just wondered if she was here.
Ms. Serta, are you here?
No.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Item nine, this evening's a quasi-judicial public hearing. I'll open that public hearing. Mr. Stokes.
Yes. A resolution of the city of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, approving a special exception to Section 54-2-5.4B of the Land Development Code to allow vehicular sales use wholesale within the commercial riverfront zoning district specifically for a property located at 920 U.S. Highway 1, providing for conflicts therewith, providing for scrivners, errors, and providing for an effective date.
All right. Thank you very much. Council, do you have any expertise, communication to do?
No.
Disclose? All right. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Madam Clerk, could you swear in those who will provide testimony this evening?
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and the factual representation which you're about to give are being presented will be truthful and accurate?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Espley?
Yes.
All right. Please, if you have a presentation.
Yes. So I want to thank all of you for listening to the special request I'm asking for. So a quick rundown of the documents you have in front of you. I've been business at licensed California dealer for 20-plus years, and I used to do the routinely auto sales stuff. And about 10 years ago, I decided I got tired of being on the road. So I came up, another guy, a friend of mine that was in international auto auction business, told me to try something new. So I did, and it's worked out really well. So what it is, what I'm proposing, I do 100% online auto sales across the United States. So I have to be a Florida dealer to have a license. I have to go through a lot of licensing permits, bond. It's just a lot of stuff for me to do. So it's very, it's not something I'm just like walking into a building, going to set up, and then two weeks later, I'm out of there and all that. So then, so in order for me, I gotta have an office, I gotta get a bond, I have to have business insurance, state resale permit, training course through DMV, fingerprinting, and the whole sunbiz fictitious business thing. So what I do is I buy cars online throughout the week. Everything is 100% online, so purchases are done online, sales are done through an international auction online, and all inventory is stored throughout the U.S. at all international auctions online. So no vehicles of any kind are on the premises. I don't park cars there. It's just me in an office. I have my computer file cabinet and keep all my files and storage there. So in conclusion, the biggest question I get, I got asked last month, was how are you guys all going to know that I'm not going to park cars or sell cars? So for me to go through all this, and it's my career, my life, for me to do something like that, it's not worth it to me to lose my license, my business. It's just, it's a lot of money. I have to invest maybe $15,000 just to get started. So it's not something I'm just going to disobey whatever rules and regulations are ours. So that's how, that's basically the business I do. And I know a lot of, it's really hard. I've had like five landlords, and they all ask the same question. I've never had a problem with anybody. I've never been in litigation with the Department of Motor Vehicles in California. I've never been, I've never had any issues with my license or my business ever.
Okay. Cool. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
We'll get to questions here in about maybe three minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Stand by. Ms. Bowler.
Thank you, councilmembers. This is a request, it's a special exception request, which is required when there is a particular zoning use that's not allowed in one zoning district but is allowed in another. In 1999, when the city adopted the commercial riverfront zoning classification for our area along U.S. 1, at that time, there was probably five or six used car lots within a 3/4 mile area. And so it was council's decision to remove that use from the commercial riverfront zoning classification at that time. It is allowed as permitted use in commercial, general, and industrial, and Mr. Espley's request is to now have it in the commercial riverfront. Because of our definition, which is our definition from 1985 and hasn't been changed, and the fact that he is required to get a state-of-Florida dealer's license, we have determined and appined that that is a vehicular sales business. And in order for him to work on a second floor, as he explained, no vehicles coming to the site, he's required, he's needed to go through the special exception to get your blessing for this particular business. We have, just to memorialize that, we have put in the resolution a condition that no vehicles can be brought to site for any reason at all, even if it's just for a few hours or whatever, which Mr. Espley's explained that he doesn't ever intend to do that. The Land Development Code requires that council finds that the request meets the finding of facts that were listed on Page 3 of the staff report, and staff has requested that be made part of the record. We have detailed on how we feel it does meet those three findings of facts. The Planning and Zoning Commission had their public hearing at their August 15 meeting and also found that there were some findings that they were required to review, and they unanimously have recommended that city council approve this special exception request.
With the condition?
With the condition as listed in the resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions to staff or the applicant? All right. Hearing none. In my opinion, this is like the perfect reason to use the special exemption rules, because I think the idea of not having car lots lining U.S. 1 is a really good idea, but clearly this is not going to be a car lot. I think that the stipulations that are in place on this would certainly protect the city from having to worry about any cars being there or any transient vehicles coming through there. So I have absolutely no problem with providing this special exemption at this time.
All right. With that, I'll move -- oh, I'm sorry. I better be careful.
All right. At this point, I'm going to open the floor to anyone who is in favor of this request. Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. Do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further from staff? All right. Thank you. Anything further from council? Hearing none. Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll move approval of Resolution Number R1919.
Second.
You and your sound systems today are having a lot of difficulties. So...
Must be me.
All right. Thank you for that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Iavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. We look forward to you being successful here in Sebastian. Thank you. Item 10, this is 10A, a presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2019-20 budget and capital improvement program. Mr. Carlin.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kilgore is here to do a brief presentation for city council. At council's direction and the budget advisory committee, we have proposed a budget that does meet the rollback rate and provides for services for the city. And so I think we, with working with staff and council and the board, I think we've got a budget that meets all those criteria and provides for the services in the city. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Kilgore to go over some of the particulars.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kilgore.
Thank you. First thing I want to do is kind of update everybody on the organizational chart for the city. We've made some changes over this last year or so. The departments are shown along the blue line. Administrative Services, Police, Building, Community Development, and Golf Course, really no changes. The Public Works area has been where it used to be a conglomerate of the Parks and Recreation, all the roads, facility maintenance, stormwater. We are, we have modified that to have the Roads and Stormwater divisions report to the city engineer. The Facilities Maintenance, Fleet Maintenance, Cemetery, and the Airport will continue to report to the Public Facilities Director. And Parks and Recreation is combined into what we're calling now the Leisure Services and reports to that director. The general fund budget, of course, is the one that draws the most attention by the public and everyone, really. We did have a 4.86% increase over the current year budget, primarily in the areas of personnel costs and operating expenses. There was some reduction in capital spending and transfers to other funds. The following slides, I'll explain those items a little further. Personnel cost of $753,000 was primarily because of adding a couple of employees. This includes the city engineer position and a planner in the Community Development Department. We were fortunate on the employee group insurance. We only had a 3% increase there, but that was $50,000. When negotiations have had monies allocated for pay changes. We also had retirement requirement, required payments that increased, and we set aside $27,000 for our additional compensation, as we call it. This is the incentive program. For every quarter, we try to identify employees that quarter that have done something significant or achieved something that is beneficial to the city and give them a small bonus. Operation cost increased $126,000, mostly due to adding $100,000 for the comprehensive plan consultant, and this is the year that we need to bump up the budget for the election Capital purchases are actually less being paid out of general fund in the prior year. Last year, we spent, or in the current year, we have $372,000 budgeted. In the coming year, we'll only have $235,000. The transfers change of $144,000 was mostly like accounting-type things where we, in the previous year, we had a transfer to the CRA fund from our general fund R&amp;R account for repairs, and we had $6,400 of capital projects that had to be funded in this year, even though they actually were committed in the prior year. We had, at the end of last budget season, we had $118,000 as a result of our final insurance rates coming in less than what we had allocated as we prepared the budget. So at the last moment, really, the last month of last year, we allocated $118,000 in a contingency account, and that was basically to set aside that for stormwater projects, but we didn't actually use it in this year. On the revenue side, actually, I've got a mistake on the slide here. It's also a 4.86% increase. Some from Eglorum and franchise taxes and utility fees. Actually, I said that wrong. It should be franchise fees and utility taxes. Service charges helped us some, and interest income took a pretty healthy increase due to the better rate environment. Focusing on property values and the millage rate, property values increased almost $114 million. That's a 9.3%, a 9.03% increase over the prior year. 1.85% of that is due to additions to the tax roll. Those additions add $134,000 to our revenues, whereas the 7.18% in reassessments is counteracted by going with the rollback rate. So we basically get no new revenue over what revenue we had in the prior year. So we are recommending that we go with a rollback rate of 2.9399. Looking at the effect that has either on a homestead property or non-homestead property at three different value levels. I looked at $200,000, $250,000, and $300,000 on this past year. You can see from the items in the red that that would be a small change, something like, in the worst case, a $2 a month increase for non-homestead properties. Going on then to look at the golf course fund. We are assuming because of the capital improvements and the upgrades to the restaurant that we'll get the full effect of that this year and have a 2.5% increase in revenue. We had the restaurant lease established at the $30,000 level, and the golf course has paid the airport rent on that property of $106,000. They are able, with the projections, to pay the principal and interest on the building fund loan that was made for those improvements. We don't anticipate replacing the carts until fiscal year 2022, so that's in our long-range plans, but won't affect us this coming year. If you look out over the six-year period, you can see some hope that the golf course, the deficits shown on our financial statements will be slowly eaten away at if all goes The airport fund, we added revenue because of the anticipated operation of the pickleball site on the airport property, so we needed to actually charge the general fund to pay that rent. We had additional income from the shade hangars that came on during this year. The airport is paying the last installment, the last $25,000 of a $200,000 loan that was made about 12 years ago. So that'd be done with that for the future years. The loans they made from the discretionary sales taxes to build the first two hangars is being amortized, and they are making those loan and principal and interest payments. Actually, in their case, it looks like with, based on our projection, by the end of next year, they own the balance sheets for our financial statements will actually show a positive balance. So a lot of effort and work has gone into that. Finally got there. The building fund, we are estimating the revenue is to be pretty much level as this They anticipate, you know, getting repaid by the golf course, and the full-time building inspector that we had in the budget this year was not filled, but we are reorganizing some in that department, but the inspector at this point is not expected to be needed. Our special revenue funds, which are really the driving force for our capital improvement program, starting with the local option gas tax, we expect about a 4% annual increase in the annual revenues. Most of that is going either to road work or replacement equipment for the roads division. And we've got $243,000, that's a repayment on the notes that we issued. We, I think they've been here in 2023, but we've still got a few more years at that level of payment paying for those past road paving projects. The Parking and Lua Fund has a balance of $55,908. That's really all the payments that we received under that program, and we don't have any currently that are paying into the fund. So that is just sitting in our accounts and earning some small balance of interest. Our biggest driver is, you know, the capital program is the discretionary sales tax. It's paying for the stormwater bank note that will mature in 2022. That's not too far away when you think about it. We are able to do upgrades to our MIS department and to replace police vehicles. We've got some other smaller projects. Also, we've got $333,000 going to road reconstruction work. Under the DST program, we can do reconstruction of roads. However, the resurfacing of the roads is programmed out of the local option gas taxes. We've got a nice, should I say, a large allocation for the public work compound. We have $500,000 set aside for seawall repairs or replacements at the canals if we should have a need to address some of those. We've got renovation of the golf tees. There was, I guess, one tee that was done this past year, and we expect that we, well, we do have like $50,000 in the next three years to take a few tees each year and get them redone. And we're matching the grant requirements to, for the construction of Hangar D. In the riverfront CRA, we've got a lot of operational type of cost, repairs at the working waterfront, the special events, the sign and sewer connection grants. We allocate part of these, or actually, most of the CRA manager's cost to be paid out of the of the CRA and the signage and landscaping contract. Recreation impact fee fund, we've got the completion of the pickleball facility. We started this year allocating five thousand dollars to each of the four zones, so there's twenty thousand dollars in the rec impact fee fund to give the Parks and Recreation Board the ability to suggest improvements during the year without having to modify the budget. They have that allocation if something comes up, that they just want to make some minor improvements, they can go ahead and proceed. We've got funds allocated for park signage. We've got work at Barber Street on the bleachers, dugouts, and the fencing. And over the next six years, actually, we are planning to address each of the playgrounds, take them one, pretty much one year, one at a time each year. And that would be include adding all-inclusive features to all of those facilities. Stormwater utility fund, we've got some equipment replacements. The stonecrop project, we are hopeful of getting a FEMA grant to cover seventy-five percent of the cost of improvements in that area. We've got also major projects scheduled each year to the extent we can afford it using the stormwater fees to address stormwater improvements. Couple of smaller funds, the law enforcement forfeiture fund, that is only used for unbudgeted items. It would be beneficial to the police department, and each time we go to spend those funds, it comes to the city council for specific approval. Cemetery trust fund, those sales are split between monies that we have to keep for future additions to the cemetery, but half of it goes in, is designated for operation and maintenance. Since we have the employees and the maintenance costs budgeted in the general fund, we are transferring eighty thousand dollars out of the cemetery fund, and that portion of the cemetery fund to offset the general fund's cost. Even with that, if you forecast it out, there's still substantial balances that would be in reserve for the cemetery trust fund. We have a debt service fund where we account for the stormwater utility debts. The payment is actually covered by the discretionary sales tax fund, and there's only one-point-one million dollars outstanding at the end of this, this year, and it will mature in May Going through the capital improvement program, which I did present to the planning board last week, and some of this is probably redundant from what I covered on the special revenue funds, but the focus is on audio, visual, and IT. At the planning and zoning board, we did talk at pretty much as length about staying up to date with technology, in particular, addressing concerns about security of the system, the hacking and the, the opening of emails that link you to some dangerous sites and so forth. We're doing some training. We're trying to keep up to date with the latest developments in that area and stay ahead of it, and some of that takes some cost. A lot of it is not necessarily equipment, but there again is training and things that we really don't want to advertise specifically how we're doing it to give people the key to get in, so. Community development, we've got twenty thousand dollars to upgrade the plotter and scanner in that department. Police department is the normal replacement of the vehicles and equipment, and they are doing an upgrade on the evidence compound out at the, out at the airport to put some cover over some of those vehicles because they have, they're responsible for keeping them when they're comp, and putting compound in good condition and not exposed to the elements. Our roads department is focused on the maintenance of paving and reconstruction of our roadways and on providing equipment for the roads crews. Public facilities, the big issue, or the big thing is the monies allocated for the public work compound, a substantial sum set aside. We're working hard to try to keep it well within that amount. We don't expect it to be that high. In the pickleball, we've got a hundred and forty thousand dollars to, after it's built this, this year, we feel like we could proceed with the landscaping and lighting towards that facility, so we allocated a bit more money there. And as I mentioned, they've got park improvement scheduled just about every year of the next six years. Stormwater fund, the big item there is the stonecrop drainage. If we can get that FEMA grant, we can make some progress on that. I mentioned the others. I mentioned the golf course before, what we're doing there, and the airport projects. Building fund has a twenty-two thousand dollar vehicle item. I particularly like this chart because it kind of summarizes the whole capital improvement program of twenty-three million dollars over the next six years. And it clearly shows that we're putting most of the funds available into the stormwater and the public facilities compound and then to roads. And it also shows on the right side where the money is chiefly coming from. If it wasn't for DST, we could be hurting, but that supply is about half the money that we need either to match grants or to do improvements ourselves. At this point, we've got the labor negotiations are still pending. We haven't settled those completely. The capital program was presented to planning and zoning board last week. As you know, the budget committee works hard to play a role in the initial drafting of the budget and commenting on the budget, and we do take their advice seriously. So ahead of us will be the first public hearing on September sixteenth. That will be a special meeting, and we need to vote in a tentative budget and tentative millage. And it's advertised in the paper on September twenty-first, and that we will have a public hearing on September twenty-fifth and adopt the final millage in the budget. So I'd be glad to respond to any questions or certifications if needed.
Any questions? Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there's a hot mic. Anyone from the public wish to speak on the budget at this time? All right, seeing none. I think this is a great budget. I think that staff has worked very hard. I appreciate the work that the Budget Review Advisory Committee put into this. In addition to all the work the staff did across the board, not just Mr. Kilgore, you did work hard and get this done, but staff across the board, from Mr. Carlisle to all of the department heads. This is, this is a solid budget, you know, all of the, the I's and T's are crossed, and I like what I see, you know. We're going to rollback rate, which is not typical for every government agency at this time of year, but the good ones are. And we're providing a heck of a lot more services. If you look at what we're doing in here through our capital improvements and the services that we're providing, we're actually providing more services, and, and we're able to roll the budget, the rollback back. So I'm very happy with this budget. I think it's incredible, and I really appreciate what staff has done. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna just basically repeat that. I think they've done a really good job. They started with the intention to go to rollback and managed to that point, which was a Herculean task. The city has been operating now for, gosh, twelve years, when we started with the, with the cutbacks because of the, of the great housing crash. And we've managed to do rollback now for four years in a row, I think, on top of that. And so the staff has done a great job of, of meeting those, those needs and continuing to provide services. We will have to deal in the future with the fact that we may not be able to do that forever, but I think that's a future issue for us to deal with, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Voters did us a favor last year by allowing us to go forward and do this, hopefully for years to come. Anyone else have any comments? All right, thank you very much. Good work, like I said, we appreciate it very much. This time, I will open the floor up to anyone who wishes to bring anything to this council that is not currently on the agenda.
Good evening. Damien Gilliams, sixteen-twenty-three U.S. One. Just one point, Mr. Mayor. That annexation meeting that you had, that the last meeting, there was a gentleman that presented his paperwork to your staff that met your meeting requirements, and you denied him the right to speak and present his information. And you and this board, all of you, denied him, nobody did a point of order. You represent us, and that gentleman did not get a chance to present his points and arguments on that annexation, so.
All right, sir, I'm gonna interrupt you right now because you're giving false information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And it's, sir.
I'm done.
All right, so to clarify to everyone, that is completely false, which is not abnormal for this speaker to provide false information. That information is absolutely false. Sir, if you disrupt this meeting one more time, you will be asked to leave. That information was a lie that was just presented to you, and I think it's important that you all understand that every single person who wished to, to provide information to us was granted. There are a lot of the amount of time to provide that information. Anyone else in the public wish to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Linda Masterson, one-oh-six Blue Heron Way. I'm not sure if I'm asking this in the right place, but I do have a couple of comments about the collective bargaining agreement.
Yes, ma'am, that will be under a different item on the agenda.
Okay.
And during that, during that, I'll ask for public input, and then you can come up under that.
Okay. Then I do have one question on the budget. I know what you asked a little earlier, but, sorry.
Ma'am, that was, we've already passed that segment as well. The rules, I, I beg your pardon, the rules do state that you have to do it under those certain items.
All right, would you please make sure that you let me know when we get to the collective bargaining agreement?
I will definitely do that. Yes, ma'am. Does anyone else have anything to bring to us this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move to new business. This is ordinance number O-dash-nineteen-dash-oh-six, Mr. Stokes.
An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, repealing ordinance O-dash-one-eight-dash-oh-two in its entirety and replacing with ordinance O-dash-one-nine-dash-oh-six, and amending, revising, and updating Chapter forty-two of the Code of Ordinances relating to fire prevention and protection, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for scribbler errors, and providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as a result of the interlocal agreement with Indian River County for us to provide the fire prevention service, and that is a change from the fire marshal's office, because one of the things that was brought up was that could be construed with the state fire marshal's office, so we made it the fire prevention office, and that's one of the changes. But within that negotiations, we accepted the responsibility also of special events and fireworks, and so we had to modify this ordinance to accommodate those changes in that interlocal agreement. And we'd asked the council to accept this modified ordinance or repeal ordinance eighteen dash zero-two and accept zero-dash-nineteen-oh-six on first reading, and if you would set a public hearing for the second reading, hopefully for September twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen.
All right, thank you very much. Council, what's your pleasure?
Move approval of ordinance O-dash-nineteen-dash-zero-six.
I'll second that. Anyone from the public have any comments on ordinance number O-dash-nineteen-dash-zero-six? This is a repeal, revising and updating the Fire Prevention Protection Code. All right, seeing none?
Just one thing on it.
Yes, go ahead.
The, the special event section in this ordinance basically accepts, the city now is going to be responsible for doing special event inspections. They're going to produce, if, as I understand it, correct, they're going to produce within their special event, I guess you can call it reservation package, they're going to produce the information pertaining to what types of fire issues the event, the event holders have to deal with, locations of, locations of fire extinguishers and stuff like that. So that's not in the ordinance about that kind of stuff. It's going to actually be in the, in the packet that each of the event holders is being given as to what their responsibilities are for that. We may end up, I think, in the cases where the city sponsors it, there's some general purpose fire extinguisher locations that we may end up having to do. There'll probably be some funds need to be expended to be, to buy the right equipment to do that, but it's going to be, I think, minor to do that when it takes place. That was one of the contentions that we had with the county fire inspector about some of the special events. They wanted fire extinguishers located in a lot of places, and I just want to make sure that we are addressing that since they brought that up, and that's going to be addressed in the packet that we do when we actually rent the space out or someone rents a place for a booth within the, within the events. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? I would say that that's, it's a good thing that the city's going to be doing that. Having dealt with other authorities at those types of events has sometimes been a little bit difficult, and I think it's, having clarity in those packets is going to be a good thing because, you know, every special event should be handled basically the same, and I don't believe that was taking place in the past, so I'm glad to see that. I have nothing further. Anything further, Ms. Carlisle?
That's, that's accurate, and Wayne has done a great job of putting that permit package together, and the next item that's going to come before you is a resolution to adopt those fees. But as far as the ordinance goes, this just sets up the mobility and the mechanisms for us to provide those services and a mechanism to charge and to set up the application process.
Okay, anything else?
Do you need the date of the public hearing to be in the motion itself?
It would be helpful if you would have set the public hearing during the motion. That would be helpful. Show amended.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you, council. That leaves this item twelve-D, Resolution R-dash-nineteen-dash-twenty, Mr. Stokes.
A resolution of the city of Sebastian, Florida, repealing Resolution R-dash-one-eight-dash-oh-six building permit fee schedule as needed pursuant to City Code Section two-six-dash-eight-one, providing for fire safety inspection fees pursuant to Section forty-two-dash-twenty-eight, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for scribbler errors, and providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Carlisle?
Mr. Mayor, these, not only does this amend some of the fee, or add the fees for the, the special event fees, but Wayne also reduced some additional inspection fees, and I'll let him talk about that, and I think it's a good thing when we reevaluate it and we can lower fees and be more attentive to our residents and needs of our contractors.
Yes, there was some fees in here that were put in essentially when we did this resolution the first time, that included the fire fees, and there was a couple of fees that were, there's very little work involved in the site plan review and the change of occupancy, no construction. We felt that those fees were a little excessive, so we did reduce those down. And then the rest of the fees that were added were essentially to capture fees associated with special events. The other fee that we did include, or the administrative fees, was the property record search fee. This is essentially for our time to search property records for permanent information. We get that on a regular basis, and the statute does provide for us to be able to charge a fee. So we charge a minimum of fee of ten dollars, but it'll be based on thirty dollars per hour pro-rated.
Council, any questions to staff? What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on Resolution R-dash-nineteen-dash-twenty?
Thank you. Damien Gilliams, sixteen-twenty-three U.S. One. Before I get started, Mr. Mayor, are you going to interrupt me? Are you going to distract me from my point that I'm trying to make? Because I'd like to try to say something.
Mr. Gilliams, I absolutely will stop you from making salacious, false remarks.
Salacious, false remarks.
You will not, you're not going to. You are not going to stand there and be disrespectful because you know the rules, okay, sir?
Salacious and false remarks.
Sir, you know the rules. If you're disrespectful in any way, I will stop you, I will interrupt you. Every single time, you may continue.
Salacious and false remarks, right?
You may continue.
Okay, that's why we have a video. We can go back to the video to check that, okay?
Sir, you wish to speak on this item because if you don't, then you can sit down.
People have a right to speak without being interrupted, just like you speak and nobody interrupts you, sir.
Sir.
Show a little respect, sir, and we'll show you respect.
Okay, I'm going to answer your question now and you're not going to interrupt me because I'm not going to lie to you like you do us.
I was talking about another gentleman.
Sir, you're interrupting me.
I wasn't talking about me.
You are lying, okay? The fact of the matter is, if you're going to stand there and lie, if you're going to be disrespectful, I am going to stop you every single time. Now, you may continue.
That gentleman did not lie.
Sir, we're speaking.
Just for the record, he did not lie.
Sir, you're done.
It's on tape.
Sir, you're done.
And you're interrupting him, okay?
Sir.
And you're disrespectful, Mr. Mayor. You need to show a little leadership.
We're going to take a quick break, folks.
Wayne, good job. Good job.
Try that with the mic and we'll call this meeting back to order. Folks, I apologize for that disruption. Hopefully we can go forward with respectful dialogue. Does anyone else wish to speak on Resolution R-19-020, the building permit fee schedule? No, sir. She wants to speak on the CBA. The CBA, so, next one. All right, seeing none, any further discussion from counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Eavino?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item C, Resolution Number R-19-21, Mr. Stokes.
A resolution of the city of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida duly ratifying an agreement for all full-time and part-time excluding temporary and seasonal employees, hourly employees between the Bargaining Unit of the Coastal Florida Public Employees Association, CFPEA, and the city of Sebastian for the period of October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2022, authorizing the city manager to notify all parties of the city's ratification and cause-set agreement to be put into effect, providing for repeal of resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for scrivener's error, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Carlisle?
Mr. Mayor, we, myself, Ms. Watson, and Mr. Kilgore, and the union reps and their prospective union collective bargaining group, we sat down and had several meetings and discussed the union contract. Union negotiations were very smooth, very cordial, and we had some minor changes to the contract. We have tentatively have a 2% pay raise, 3% if there's no changes to the budget, they will get up to 3% pay raise. Some of the things that we talked about was shift pay, overtime. We clarified bereavement where it's three days in, state five days out, where it was just at the discretion of the supervisor. We talked about the pay for workers' comp, where we used to have a policy where we would pay all of it if the employee didn't want to come back for light duty, they would have to use leave time to cover the one-third of workers' comp. I think all of these things are something that we've worked through and the union is going to be voting on that and it's our turn today to do our side and ratify it and we'd ask counsel to look over what we've provided you. I hope you have and I think it's a good contract for both us and the PEA.
Okay, great, and it fits within the budget that's...
And it is within the budget, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, at this time, if you'd like to speak on the collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. My name is Linda Masterson, 106 Blue Heron Way. My background is sales and marketing, but I've also been a CEO of a publicly traded company. I've worked for large corporations like Johnson &amp; Johnson and I've also done for startups. And having looked through this agreement, it's all I can say, it is incredibly generous. I don't know if, I'm going to put this on the record so the rest of our citizens can hear it. We're talking about up to 600 hours of sick pay that can be carried forward, that's quite a few weeks, actually it's three months. Vacation between two and five weeks, including 11 holidays additional. The medical is $25 a month at a time when many people can't get it for less than $1,500 a month. And 40% of the premium only for the dependents. So that is very, very rich. In addition, we're contributing 9% to a retirement account. On a $50,000 employee, that's $4,500, that's more than double what you can put into an IRA. Plus uniforms, plus tuition reimbursement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is like incredibly rich. Now, maybe these kinds of benefits made sense when you were paying public employees less than you paid private employees, but that's not the case anymore. It's a matter of fact, most public employees get paid more by 20% than private employees. So when you put all that together, this is ridiculous. So, me as a taxpayer, I think that the amounts of money that we're paying to government employees is ridiculously high. Now, I understand it's only a 2% pay increase, but when you start looking at the full package, a $20,000 employee is probably costing us $50,000 when you add all this stuff in. It's crazy. That's the end of my comment, but I just think that you guys should recognize that these kinds of benefits are what's bankrupting this country.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on the collective bargaining agreement? Okay, seeing none. Counsel, what is your pleasure on Resolution R-19-21?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of Resolution R-19-21.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, any questions from counsel or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Eavino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 12D, approved CSA numbers 1, 3, 4, and 5. Mr. Carlisle?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, these, as you know, earlier in the year, the city had done a complete roadway evaluation and put together a six-year roadway project list that was adopted by the city as our roadway pavement program. These next four agreements with Ranger and asphalt paving systems are contracts that were competitively bid and awarded by the council and these prices that are in these bids are subject to those terms and conditions of those contracts. And this brings years 18 and 19, the first two years of our program with what funds we have available through DST for the reconstruction and local ops and gas tax for the repaving and resurfacing roadways, along with CavCor to get that second lift of asphalt on there. So, do you want to consider these and can you consider them in one motion, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
And that...
All of these?
Or do you want to consider Rangers too in one motion and asphalt paving in one motion?
It would be the pleasure of the council if you're satisfied with them, since they're not resolutions or ordinances, you could do them all together or you could bundle them any way you want or do them individually.
The reason that we put them, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is because of the amount of dollars. We didn't feel it was appropriate to put them on consent agenda, we wanted the public to understand that we're being forthright with what we're doing with our dollars, that we're following the plan that the city council approved, that we've done our due diligence in our pricing and our competitive bids, but these follow our contracts and our purchasing policies.
Okay, so, counsel, we can do this a few different ways. We can take them individually, we could take them all, items D through H as one, or we can split them up and take items D and E as one and F through H, I believe, as one.
They've all been bid on, correct? I mean...
So why don't we just take them all together as one?
I think so.
Okay, so, folks, we're going to go ahead and take items D, E, F, G, and H, it's all repaving projects and we're going to handle these all as one. So if you have any comments that you would like to add on any of these issues or any of these items, please come forward at this time. Yes, sir.
Hi. Good evening. John Christina, Spring Valley. On the millings, there's only, it looks like only three of the roads are going to be completely torn up on the proposal. Is that correct?
That's correct. The funding...
Oh, three complete re-dos, so, yes, sir.
Does the city have plans for the millings from those roads? They could be reused for city property?
They're reused.
Okay, I was going to recommend the dump. That site's awful dusty. Okay, that's about it. As far as, you know, there's a lot of complaints through town about, you know, my road needs to be done, my road needs to be done here at all, comprehensively. What would be the plan to repave every road in the town over a period of 20, 30 years?
Looking on that. Sir, we have a, we have a five-year repaving plan in place. You can call the city manager, he has that plan in place and then that will be updated periodically.
All right, thank you.
As we go forward.
That's also on the city website, I think, dude. You can go to the city website, I mean, if you want to print a spreadsheet.
I want to see if I'm 20 years or 25 years down the road, that's all.
Thank you very much.
We hope to have them all done in five.
No. Not all. Just the ones that are D's and F's.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on these items? All right, seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure on items D through H?
I move for approval for D through H.
I'll second that.
Any discussion from counsel?
Well, just one thing to remember and it was mentioned by the city manager and I think it was brought up by the gentleman that came up, is that this is the execution of that street paving plan.
The first two years.
That was put together, so it's the first, the first two-year execution of that plan. So, if you want to go to the city's website, you can look at the plan and see, I almost went blind trying to read the spreadsheet, but you can go look at the spreadsheet and actually see what that plan is. But it is the execution of a plan, it's not helter-skelter here, so...
If I may, Mr. ... Yes, Mr. Dodd, we don't have the funds to do all of year two. So, as we start getting some of these roads off the complete reconstruction, we're going to try to get this plan on track. We may have to look at other funding sources and other ways of doing it, but with the funds we have available, we won't get all of year two done, but we'll get the majority of it done.
Yeah, I love it's aggressive, it's bold and it's really, you know, for anyone who would say that, you know, we're not paying attention to the roads, all they have to do is look at this and see that we indeed are.
And the other important thing for people to remember is that when we completely redo a street, the stormwater is being redone at the same time.
Those streets that are being completely reconstructed, where the stormwater improvements need to be done, we're doing those ahead of time.
Yes, so that's another component of this, it's not in this process, but it's important, I think, for people to understand. It's not like we're not disregarding all that stuff. When these streets are completely redone, stormwater is also redone if it needs to be done, so...
Well, we're doing 22 streets, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
It's a good start.
Anything else from counsel on these items?
We'll be looking at those damaged drain pipes underneath the driveway as well.
Yes.
We have some money set aside for that, some people can't afford to get it.
Since we have to, since as part of redoing the streets, we'll redo any of the damaged drain pipes and so forth.
In the roads that are being reconstructed, not in just the resurfacing roads.
Right, right. Good point.
All right, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Eavino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Item 13, city attorney matters. Mr. Stokes?
I have nothing to add, sir.
Very good. Mr. Carlisle, what do you have for us this wonderful evening?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Williams? Let me just counsel. Councilmember Eavino?
No.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Nothing, sir.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple of items. There were some signs that were put out a couple of weeks ago, they're like "Save Our Sebastian" or whoever put those signs out. We understand the passion that you have for the "Save Our Sebastian," whatever the issue might be, but if you could do us a favor and clean up "Our Sebastian" and pick the signs up, because now they're just all laying around all sideways and sort of, they're really clutter and they're litter. So if we can get those picked up, I'd very much appreciate that. I do have a question about code enforcement in our CRA and I have some issues with at least one property in particular and I just have some questions about it and whether or not there are any violations on this property. If we could just take a look at it, I'm not trying to single out any property per se, but, you know, the CRA is a very important district. We spent a tremendous amount of money to beautify that area to make sure that that area is really a gem for the city, but there's a property down there that has, you know, a large portion of the parking lot is fenced off and the driveway is fenced off and I'm not sure how that jives with necessary parking spaces. Some trashy furniture laying in what appears to be a right-of-way. The property has an old car sitting idle in the parking lot and there's a beer keg in what appears to be the right-of-way and some rusty old signs and then there's some wired hot dog signs out there all the time. And, you know, this CRA is a very important portion of the city of Sebastian, so if we could just go ahead and check and make sure that we're, code enforcement is doing our diligence, specifically in the CRA just from this this evening, but also throughout the town. I know they do a great job, but sometimes these things just need to be taken a look at, so...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll take a look at that. I'll go through there myself and alert the chief.
Thank you, I have nothing further. Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to all of the city employees and staff for the work that they did with the upcoming Dorian heading our way. I think you did a great job buttoning up the city and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Here, here. Counselmember Dodd?
Yeah, the 9/11 ceremony this morning at Riverview Park was very nice, it was very well-attended and the vice mayor didn't bring this up, but the city manager has assured me that we'll have a new PEA system down there before the next event that takes place. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. There being no further business, we are adjourned.